I move that the board approve the 2016-17 Student Rights and Responsibilities Document as attached to the Board Action Report.
I second the motion.
Any questions, comments?
No, we can do an action either unless we have any questions.
Who's the staff person that's over this?
All right.
Questions or comments?
I don't have, yeah, there you go.
Okay. Okay. Okay, no questions or comments? Ms. Ritchie?
I have a quick comment.
Director Burke?
I just wanted to make a quick comment on this. Thank the staff for the work and recognizing that this is a continuous work in process, the Student Rights and Responsibilities Handbook. Right now, it's a little bit thick and it's sort of, it has a legalese feel to it that I think we're in the process of trying to shake out. And I just want to recognize that publicly and also the effort that's being done to make this more student-friendly, family-friendly, and thank the team for their work on that. We'll continue to support this work every year. Look forward to it next year as well.
Any more comments, questions? Director Plantford?
I didn't hear a committee recommendation on this one.
Oh, yes, the CNI.
Yeah, this did come through CNI on May 9th for consideration pending some amendments that are incorporated into this that you'll notice in the bar.
Ms. Ritchie? Roll call.
Director Pinkham?
Aye.
Director Blanford?
Aye.
Director Burke?
Aye.
Director Geary?
Aye.
Director Harris?
Aye.
Director Peters?
Aye.
Director Patu?
Aye.
This motion passed unanimously.
Okay, our second action item, 2016-2017 Families and Education Levy, FEL contracts.
I move that the board authorize the superintendent to accept the grant funds totaling $15,469,124 for the Families and Education Levy, FEL-funded programs with the City of Seattle's Department of Education and Early Learning for the family support worker, elementary, middle, and high school innovation, middle school linkage, school nurses, out-of-school activities, transportation, and sports programs, with any minor additions, deletions, and modifications deemed necessary by the superintendent to take any necessary actions to accept the grant funds. This item came to the Audit and Finance Committee on May 12th earlier this year, and the committee reviewed the motion and moved the item forward for consideration by the full board. I think we had some questions that we wanted to answer, and that's why it was for consideration.
Second the motion.
Any questions, comments?
Do you want anything to add?
Okay, Director Plantford?
I just want to say for the record that I think, I speak for the entire organization and am grateful to the citizens of Seattle for $15 million that they are providing us to help us do the critical work of educating those students of Seattle. I know from having spent enough time in public education that we are the envy of many districts around the country that wish that they had an additional $15 million to do important work around closing gaps and improving outcomes for all of our students. And so, it's easy sometimes to get lost, to lose sight of the generosity as we're just shuffling paper from one, you know, voting on things. But I think it's important for us to take a moment and think about how important this fund, these funds are to our mission and when we have the opportunity to thank the citizens of Seattle for their generosity.
Director Peters?
I would just like to add to that, that I also appreciate the responsiveness of the Family and Education Levy Committee to allocating more funds for the family support workers. That is something that we had expressed interest in, and so did other members of the community throughout the city. And I look forward to the city and the district working together in partnership. This is a significant amount of money, and it is my hope that it can be allocated in ways that meet the needs of the district in accordance with the district's goals as well.
I do, I'd like to echo what Director Plantford and Director Peters about this Families and Education Levy for really supporting a lot of the work that we do here in this region. We know that without this extra funds that we would not be able to do many of the things that we are doing right now in terms of not being fully funded by the state. So, we want to say thank you to all the citizens of Seattle and also to the city for supporting us with the Families and Education Levy. I don't see any more questions, comments. Ms. Ritchie?
Director Blanford?
Aye.
Director Burke?
Aye.
Director Geary?
Aye.
Director Harris?
Aye.
Director Peters?
Aye.
Director Pinkham?
Aye.
Director Patu?
Aye.
This motion has passed unanimously.
Our third action item, BEX IV and PTA IV, Lincoln High School, approval of general contractor/construction manager, GC/CM, delivery method, and resolution, 2015/16-18. Can we hear from the Ops?
I'll do the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. I move that the school board, one, authorize the superintendent to use a general contractor/construction manager, GCCM, alternative construction delivery method pursuant to RCW 39.10 for Lincoln High School, and, two, approve resolution 2015-16, sorry, 2015-16-18 pursuant to RCW 39.10.280 as attached to the Board Action Report.
Second the motion.
Can we hear from the Chair of Ops?
This item was heard by the Ops Committee on May the 19th and moved forward to the full board with the recommendation for approval.
Thank you. Any comments, any questions? I don't see any. Ms. Ritchie?
Director Burke?
Aye.
Director Geary?
Aye.
Director Harris?
Aye.
Director Peters?
Aye.
Director Pinkham?
Aye.
Director Blanford?
Aye.
Director Patu?
Aye.
This motion has passed unanimously.
Okay. Our fourth action item, BEX IV and PTA IV, Lincoln High School, approval of GC/CM contract, P5084 to Lydic Construction Incorporated.
I move that the school board authorize the superintendent to utilize a general contractor/construction manager, GCCM, alternative construction delivery method on the Lincoln High School project and award contract P5084 to Lydic Construction Incorporated.
Second the motion.
Chair of Ops?
This item was heard on May the 19th and moved forward for consideration.
Excuse me for a second. I don't know that I read the entire motion. I think I had an abbreviated version. Should I, do I need to read the entire motion?
Yeah.
I think I do.
Yes.
All right. So, I want to insert after Lydic Construction Incorporated. This authorizes the GCCM contractor to immediately provide pre-construction services for an amount not to exceed $300,000. This approval also authorizes the superintendent to negotiate with any minor additions, deletions, and modifications to the agreement as deemed necessary and sign a contract amendment for the guaranteed maximum price, GMP, as defined by the RCW 39.10.370 for an amount not to exceed $56,749,750, which includes specified general conditions, negotiated support services, the maximum allowable construction cost, MACC, including subcontractor bonds, the MACC contingency, and the GCCM fee, excluding Washington State sales tax, no earlier than completion of 90% of construction documents unless otherwise agreed to by the parties. The GMP excludes the pre-construction services allowance. Do I hear a second?
Second the motion.
This item was still heard on May the 19th and moved forward for consideration.
Can I ask why is it in consideration?
I believe we're still negotiating. We had just received, actually, the bid documents from Lydic Construction, I believe, the day before. This went to operations. Director Patu?
So, you're complete?
Pardon me?
I said...
Correct. They were not complete.
Oh, they're not complete.
They're complete now, yes.
Oh, okay. That's what I asked. Thank you. Director Peters?
I have one question that was brought up during public testimony, and that has to do with the environmental impact statements. What is the status of the EIS for this project?
Okay, so I'm going to start off by introducing myself. Richard Best, Director of Capital Projects and Planning for Seattle Public Schools. Lincoln High School is actually included in the BEX IV programmatic environmental impact statement. What was contemplated in BTA IV is adding additional funds for systems, building systems, that we believed in the Capital Projects Office would not be modernized, given that we had staff and students out of the building. Director Peters, we determined it would be a good time to upgrade those systems as well. Systems are not, building systems are not required to go through a programmatic environmental impact statement. What, the impact from this project is actually putting the 1,600 kids in the comprehensive high school to that neighborhood, and that was actually contemplated in BEX IV. And we did implement a programmatic environmental impact statement in BEX IV that included Lincoln High School. So, the associated impacts to that neighborhood were included, discussed in the programmatic EIS for BEX IV.
Thank you. Director Burke?
I wanted to follow up on some concerns that I had raised at introduction. One of the things about this item that gives me pause is that we're coupling the pre-construction services of $300,000 and the approval authority of the superintendent to execute a contract up to the $56,749...
$56 million.
Sorry. Let me throw a couple more digits on there. The fiduciary part of that makes me uncomfortable, that it feels like we are, in some sense, issuing a blank check without having seen a 90% complete design, which is, as I read, at the deliverable on the pre-construction services. And I'm wondering if you can speak to that point historically, and what is our risk as a district?
Sure. Historically, Director Burke, pre-construction services have been included as part of the guaranteed maximum price. In the GCCM construction process, we actually bring the general contractor in as a participant on the design team. His incentive is that he eventually wants to build that project. And so, consequently, he's able to give us, we provide guidance in how much money that we have available to build the project, so hence the $56,749,750 notation in the bar and in the contract. And then, he provides guidance to us as to the best ways to build the project to not exceed that construction amount. Generally, if we have, if we are able to bid the project and have all the bidders total up the bid and be below $56,749,750, you've authorized this project to proceed with your action tonight. If it is slightly over, we would be coming back to you for approval to adjust the contract amount to proceed, and I don't know, you know, we haven't bid this project, or we're not nearly at 90% completion. We're just beginning, or we're at the end of schematic design. And so, you'll have opportunities to provide guidance and input, and there will be several community meetings as well in which the community provides guidance and input.
And so, from a historical perspective, when we go from the stage we are now, sort of at a schematic design level, and go through those processes, the director input, the community input, more development around the programmatic aspects of the building, what has been our history of maintaining that?
Guaranteed maximum price.
That GMP, that guaranteed maximum price.
I can't speak to our history long back. Our recent history has been fairly good. We did come for an adjustment to the Wilson Pacific contract amount. Olympic Hills escapes me as to whether we sought an adjustment. I believe we actually bid that project within the project budget. We did seek approval for a D form, D9 form that OSPI requires, that you just affirm that you're utilizing the GCCM construction amount, and you had authorized the project for the guaranteed maximum price. So, but this is typical of contracts for GCCM construction. You have a pre-negotiated services amount, and then you list the guaranteed maximum price. That historically, we have done. I just can't speak to all the projects and whether they met their guaranteed maximum price or not. But this is historically how we've implemented GCCM projects for Seattle Public Schools, and it's a very standard practice for other public agencies as well. It's implemented in this manner.
Perfect. Thanks. I really appreciate that clarity. I have one last question. In the contract documents, I noticed that there's an indication for contingency fees of, I believe, 2.5 to 5%.
Correct.
Is that contingency already included in this amount, or would that be above and beyond if it has to be executed?
That contractor's contingency is included in that amount, so...
Perfect. Thank you. So, we've got a little bit of headroom already.
Yes, we do.
Thank you.
Superintendent Island?
I was just going to add that having the contractor come in early is really to our advantage, because otherwise, we would just bid the process without that knowledge. And then, you have a history of sometimes missing it by more. So, bringing the contractor in and having them look at the bid documents through a contractor's eyes basically does save us money, because they see places where the job can be done more efficiently and more effectively. So, I don't see any upside risk. It's still bid through the subs, but we get to do that with the benefit of a contractor's view in advance.
Correct.
Any more questions, comments? Ms. Ritchie?
Director Geary?
Aye.
Director Harris?
Aye.
Director Peters?
Aye.
Director Pinkham?
Aye.
Director Blanford?
Aye.
Director Burke?
Aye.
Director Patu?
Aye.
This motion has passed unanimously.
We are now going into our introduction items. Just want to congratulate Scott Pinkham. Today is his anniversary. Happy anniversary from all of us. And you have more to come. Principal Association for Seattle Schools Collective Bargaining Agreement.
Good evening, Director Superintendent Clover-Codd, Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources. So, this item is really on the agenda tonight as a placeholder. We're currently in the midst of bargaining with the Principals Association of Seattle Schools and expect to bring you a contract to approve on July 6th. Our hope is to finish bargaining by June 30th. I think it's important for you to know that we've entered into an interest-based bargaining process with PASS. It's very important to Superintendent Island that we collaborate with our labor partners and work together to solve collective problems of the district on behalf of our students. So, our number-one goal is to ensure that we are able to recruit, develop, and retain a high-quality principal and assistant principal core. We anticipate bringing you a three-year contract. I'll open it up for questions at this time. I don't have very many details. Again, this is a placeholder.
As you indicated, this is interest-based bargaining. I think you probably heard one of the interests of the principals today.
I think we did. Let's work together to close the opportunity and achievement gaps.
Director Blanford?
Is the intent to give us time to review, let me start again. How much time will we have to review the contract before we have to take action on it?
Well, that's a really good question. So, we anticipate finishing up all of our language on the 23rd of June, hopefully, and settling all of the matters on June 30th, which would be a really quick turnaround to try to get you a package to review probably by the 2nd of July. I don't know how I could do it any sooner. It'll take me a couple days to turn the language around, but that's the timeline.
And so, it would not be intro and action on the same board meeting?
Well, what we're doing is intro tonight. We would do action on July, yeah, it's okay. We would do action on July 6th. I don't know what happened if we weren't ready, or I guess we would wait until August to do action if we weren't, if we hadn't finalized the negotiations.
Okay.
Or if perhaps the board needed more time to review.
Director Harris?
We've been hearing a lot about site-based management. Will this contract address some of those responsibilities and accountability for site-based management?
Well, site-based management, as determined in Seattle Public Schools, is a really important part of our collective bargaining agreement with the Seattle Education Association. So, site-based management does not just mean the principals making the decisions. It means that SEA is coming together with the principal on the building leadership team, and they are making decisions. And SEA always has a two-thirds vote when we're looking at the budget, the professional development plan, and the CSIP. That's how our site-based management works in Seattle. We are bringing greater accountability to the evaluation process, principal scorecard. We're looking at moving some things around there. I don't know how specific I can get, because we're in the midst of negotiations, but we know that that's important, that we're solving problems at the building level, and that we're, well, it's really about mutual accountability. But yes, we're addressing that.
Director Blanford?
So, to the question about the principals' interest in equity, I'm wondering if you can share, and maybe you can, and if you can't, I understand completely, given the status of the agreement or the negotiations. But I'm wondering if you can share anything that helps us to understand how the contract might actually embed some ability for the principals to push on equity, on an equity agenda? Do you understand my question?
I totally understand your question. I'm just not sure I can on-the-spot answer it in a coherent and way.
So, if our interests, being as it's interest-based bargaining, if our interests are indeed about closing our gaps, what stance would we have taken going into the negotiations?
Well, I think we're looking at things like culture and climate of the building as being a really important indicator of the, you know, the climate of the building is directly correlated to student achievement. I think that's one part of the conversation. I think we're looking at mutual accountability. We're also looking at the retention of our principals. When you have turnover, 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 that is not good for students. So, other than that, I don't know that I can talk specifically about what's going on in negotiations.
Well, I know that literature would suggest that principal professional development is a key catalyst in closing gaps and improving instruction overall. Not remembering that being in there, or?
So, we are having discussions about principal professional development, as well as assistant principal professional development and mentorship. All of those things are on the table to discuss.
Okay. Well, I look forward to seeing the contract.
Thank you.
Any more questions, comments? Thank you. Resolution, 2015/16-19, approval of 2016-17 operating and capital budget. Can I ask the Chair of A&amp;F for your recommendation?
Hold on a second. Sorry, I'm...
I'd be happy to do it if you need.
I think I got it. Okay, this came to the Audit and Finance Committee, as well as several board work sessions. And it's, well, and then we discussed it at the June 9th Audit and Finance Committee meeting. We discussed it multiple times.
Okay.
So, you made no recommendations? I don't see a recommendation on here, and I'm not sure if...
The sheet I have says a recommendation for approval.
Yeah, the one I have doesn't.
Yeah, it's not on here. All right. Go ahead, Linda.
Linda Sebring, Budget Director. I'm pleased to present the superintendent's recommended 1617 budget for the next school year. I do remember it was recommended to go forward for approval, but if we miss documenting something, I apologize. So, I have a very quick presentation here. I know you've got a lot on your agenda to talk about the budget that's coming forward to you. I also wanted to call everybody's attention to a much more detailed version of the budget, which is online. Our publishing department here has also been asked to make some copies for public members, and they will do that for a fee with sales tax. So, if people would like to look at the budget book, it has been heavily revamped this year in response to community questions, comments, and areas that were confusing to people over time. So, our goal is to improve communication always and become more transparent. The school section is completely new, and there are sections even about the City of Seattle and the demographics in which we support the students. So, I highly encourage everybody in our community to please take a read in it. If there are further improvements we can make, we're always open to, you know, getting that feedback, and we don't want to make it too much bigger, because it does, it is rather large. So, jumping right in, the budget, we call it budget or budgets, is four different funds. I know we've talked about this in our work sessions to some extent. The resolution, that if you approve this budget, you will be signing, will be dealing with this section, the expenditures. You're authorizing us to expend up to $789.7 million in the general fund, $6.7 million for the Associated Student Body Fund, $20.4 million for the debt service, and $274.5 million in the capital fund. The total expenditures is almost $1.1 billion. Some of the details on the general fund is some variances, and I apologize, somehow the edits don't show up on this. There were some changes that were made after the June 9th Audit and Finance Meeting. Two particular changes. One is, we run a little bit ahead of the state in our estimating, so we are trying to anticipate everything they do. And there was a issue out at the end of May adjusting the calculation for our local property tax levy. So, sometimes when those come out, we run the formulas. We negotiate with SEA, the Office of Superintendent of Public Construction, to determine, is our calculation accurate, or did we miss something? And on this one, unfortunately, we missed something. There was a change to what's known as the ghosting formula, which is in flux right now. As the state provides more funding for us, things that they have given us ability to collect levy on in the ghosting needs to start coming away. And what we don't have is the blueprint for how fast is it going to come out of ghosting. So, we are, in effect, counting some things maybe twice on our levy, and it's, I know OSPI knows this, and one of the factors was removed from the levy calculation. The input, what this did to us is it reduced our local levy. Previously, what you have seen was 190... levy. Previously, what you have seen was $198.8 million. It is now $197.8 million. So, we lost $1 million of revenue from our estimates. Because we run ahead of OSPI and a lot of the state, we had a budget reserve that we put together at the beginning of our budget development in October for things like utility increases, transportation, unforeseen issues. We have not dissolved that yet. We do not liquidate that fund and move it into our contingency fund until after the budget is adopted by OSPI. So, what we are proposing to do is we will remove $1 million from our revenue estimate. We will reduce our budget development reserve by $1 million. It does not change anything we're asking the board to do as far as expenditures because we've taken out an expense. So, if you'd like to ask questions about that, because it's a little complicated.
Director Blanford.
Director Patrick?
No, Director Blanford.
I heard from a couple constituents who also happen to be city employees who reviewed the budget and said that there were some issues with -- I'm wondering if it is this or if it's a different issue?
So, I understand the issue that you're addressing. No, I'd be happy. I had not planned to talk about it, but I will. So, yes, the city of Seattle called. I appreciate them looking at our budget book and asking questions. And I will talk a little bit about what we've done with grants. And part of it was affecting the city of Seattle's, how things are presented, but another part is a timing difference. So, let me get to another page, and then I will talk about that if I could.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the levy? Okay. So, great. This looked good on my screen. I always have to bring things down here. So, what we wanted to show here is, and I'm going to go back for just a second, one of the highlights we talked about in one of the board presentations was the federal funds and this reduction of $12.3 million. And that a portion of that is being caused by the change in accounting of we -- part of the feedback we were receiving from the public was, you guys are budgeting to spend all this money on teaching, and you don't spend that much money on teaching. Why don't you budget things accurately? Part of building a budget this large is we build in capacity. And we've, you know, discussed that in detail in the budget book as well. But it's a placeholder for new grants coming in, potentially grants that aren't spent this year that will carry over to next year. Schools carry funds from one year to the next. It's different schools each year. It's numbers that are difficult to pinpoint as to which source is going to come in that we don't know about when we lock the budget. And we lock the budget at a point in time, typically the beginning part of May, so that we can put all these details together, make sure everything reconciles for you, and that we're confident that our revenues cover our expenditures. So, but this question just kept coming up. You know, you budget for a lot more than you spend, and we're like, well, we should actually dig into that. And what we found when we looked at it was that 50% of our gap between what we budgeted and what we expended was being caused by 10% of our funds or the grants. And what is happening with our grants is we're carrying some forward from one year to the next. We aren't necessarily getting as many new ones as we anticipate getting, and our grants have been fairly flat. We looked at a three-year trend. We've been having about mid-60s, 64, 65 million of grants, but our budget for grants kept going up. So, we dug into it, and we said, let's dial back the capacity we put in there, which used to be $16 million for new grants and carryover. And also, we recognize that we were using the budget as a placeholder for, I got an award for this amount, let me put it in the budget. The budget is supposed to be a reflection of what we're planning to spend during this period of time. It wasn't. Some of that funds, when people get things, like the city of Seattle, we have incentive pay. So, they may give us an award, but we're not going to get it all to spend in next school year. Some of it will be available for the 1718 school year. So, the question, Director Blanford, about what is the perception the city of Seattle has, is it looked like their awards to the district had gone down because we took out the incentive pay from the budget, and we'll be reflecting that in the 1718 school year. But we had not clearly communicated that in the narrative. So, what we have done is we have updated the online -- sorry, I can't change your printed copy, but we have updated the online budget, and we've communicated this with the city of Seattle, to show, explain what we were doing and why the budget, again, is a reflection of what we're planning on spending next school year. It should not be the award for the whole amount. There was another issue also with the levies coming through the city of Seattle in that they don't all come in before we have to lock our budget. There were some that were just coming in last week. So, again, they're not going to be reflected on the school pages because they weren't authorized in time. We will be loading them for the schools. We will be taking them out of that capacity amount. And that was a misunderstanding from the city is, you know, they have their spreadsheets of, here's what we're awarding everybody, but they haven't necessarily got all that information to us, and they're still working through their processes. So, what we've committed to doing is we'll have some more discussions next year so we can have a clear understanding of our timelines and their timelines, and how we can try to reflect things better for what the schools are supporting and the funds they're providing.
Thanks for that explanation.
So, again, the federal revenues are not going down by $12.3 million. They're actually, 10 million of that was capacity that we pushed down. And this slide was to try to visually show that. And again, I apologize, it's not showing up very well here. But what we wanted to show is the blue bar with the yellow on top was what we budgeted for grants, and the yellow was the capacity we had. And then the red was what actually occurred each of these years. So, you see the $63.5 million, the $65 million, the $64 million. And we're still in the middle of the 1516 school year. But the budget up here, it's up about here, kept creeping up, and the grants are staying about the same. Grants come and go. It doesn't mean we're not bringing in, you know, great grants for great things. It's just some are reaching the end of their life, and they're leaving, and then new ones are coming in. So, what we wanted to show here is we now have $7 million over here, which is still more than we've spent in this year and what we're anticipating spending in 1516. So, we believe even by pushing it down slightly and getting it better aligned with our planned expenditures, that we will not in any way prevent ourselves from being able to incorporate new grants received during this year. So, there's an asterisk on this page under teaching. And this was driving a lot of the questions we were getting from the community, which was, you budget to spend this much on teaching, and you don't. And you budget to spend less on your other activities, and you spend more. And part of that was, that was where the grant capacity was, was in teaching. Because the majority of our grants that come in are not for central admin or other support. They're for teaching activities or teaching support. So, we recognize that part of that grant underspend was affecting our budget of teaching as a percentage of the total. So, again, teaching went up, but it went up more than the 6.4. It's just having that reflection of the accounting adjustment crosses multiple things. What I wanted to share here was a new slide that came to our attention. We heard from a few community members last year that back many, many years ago, the district had had discussions about direct services to schools and support services. And we had kind of lost that conversation, and people were perceiving that the school funding formula, the weighted staffing standard, was the direct services to schools. And that 50% of our budget was all we were sending out to work with the schools. And we wanted to help people understand that that's not really a good reflection, that there are nurses out in schools, there's custodians out in schools, there's bus drivers. They don't work in this building. They are directly working with students, food service workers. And so, what we did was, we went through without trying to have a preconceived conclusion, and added up what all those things cost, and then look at it as a percentage of total. And we're looking at 81% direct, 19% support. And because I know people are very interested in this, we also put the reference at the bottom, which is on page 65, we show our math of all the details of how we came up with these dollar amounts and how much is in those different categories. This slide on maintenance supplies and operating costs, we talked about, I know, in our last work session, it is required by the legislature to, at some point during our budget presentation with our board, and we're doing it twice, they give us kind of a latitude of what does that mean. We are supposed to identify the revenue we get for maintenance supplies and operating costs from the state, and how much we are budgeting to spend on maintenance supplies and operating costs. It further goes on to say that if the state is providing more for what is called MSOCs, then we are spending on MSOCs. We need it to disclose what we're spending the funds on. Seattle does not have that problem. Our revenue does not exceed our current planned MSOC expenditures. And I know there's further discussions going on that may increase the MSOC expenditures even more. So, the next steps here is, there's a public hearing next Thursday for the public to come, and it's the official public hearing. There have been notices in the Seattle Times. There's going to be another one this week. There was one last week announcing the public hearing. I know it's on our webpage. It's on the Budget Offices portion of the webpage. On July 6th, we have the board scheduled to vote on an adopted budget. And then, as I was pointing out earlier, we get a little ahead of some things. The ESD, and apologize for the acronym, the Educational Service District, on July 10th looks at our budget to make sure there aren't any errors, like the $1 million one we just caught. And then, they tell us, if there are any errors, we need to fix it. If anything was materially found on that that would adjust what the board voted on, we would have to come back to the board and ask for another vote. Most districts do it after that, but because of our timeline, and because I know there's not another session in July, we do it earlier. August 8th, by then, we're spending the month of July and part of August, actually technically loading the budget into our financial system so that our principals and program managers can start putting in purchase orders for activities for next school year. And then, September 3rd is another date required by the state for approving the budget.
Director Harris.
We heard a figure during public testimony that somehow the Seattle Public Schools has a $60 million rainy day fund, and I'm wondering where that might be hidden?
I'd really like them to read the budget books. We try to explain that that is the reserve, is what they're looking at. And the reserve is made up of the Economic Stabilization Fund, which is the 3.25% that the board directs us to set aside. But it's also made up of things such as school carryforwards. So, when schools get funding from a variety of sources, including we let them have underspend in their school funding formula, the weighted staffing standard, to carry from one year to another school year, that shows up in the reserve amount at the end of the school year. So, a large portion is the school reserves. There is the board's reserve. There's also things like non-spendable inventory. All of the napkins we have in food services all get added up at the end of the year, and gets added in there. And there is also, when we get grants, they provide the money in advance, but we haven't yet done the service to earn the grant. Those funds are in our reserve balance. Our federal funds are reimbursable grants, but others, sometimes they give us the money in advance. So, it's a combination of things. And again, we tried to explain it in the budget book, and would like to refer people there to look at it. It is not a full rainy days fund.
Director Blanford.
And so, based on what you just said, that $60 million, the only amount of money that we could redistribute to, I think that was ORCA K8 that was testifying that we should expend funds from the rainy day fund, would be the dollars that are either that we have already set policy and said that we'll have a certain amount of money that is in reserve, or the school underspend?
Yes, and ORCA may be part of that money. I haven't checked whether they have a carryforward from last year to this year.
Right.
And it varies by school every year. And the board policy on the board's Economic Stabilization Fund is very restrictive.
Right.
So, I believe there's only some very limited purposes where you can tap into it unless you choose to change the policy.
Yeah. I know that's the case. The reason I'm asking the question is because if someone doesn't have a deep understanding of what we're calling the rainy day fund or the reserve fund, they would, they'd just see a big pocket of money that they think we could make allocation decisions. But one of the worst allocation decisions, reallocation decisions we could make would be to take underspend money from one school and give it to a different school.
Correct.
And I think that's an important, if that person were here, that would be something that would be important for the person that was testifying to understand. And I know I've got a community meeting, and I know there's some people that are concerned about budget issues. So, that'd be something that will be important to share with our communities.
I could try to find the page in the budget book and help you out in your conversation if you'd like. And if we are still -- it seems to be one of the biggest challenges for communication is people look at our ending fund balance, and they're like, okay, this is available to spend. And some of it also, in this year, when 1516 ends, we will have at least $10 million, actually $13 million, that is set aside to balance 1617. So, when we say we're using one-time money from one year to the next, it also shows up in the ending fund balance of the year we're not using it. So, I anticipate that the ending fund balance at the end of 1516 will go up even higher because of this movement of money from one year to another.
Director Harris.
So, is that where the $11 million of one-time only spend comes from? That's a question I'm getting from everywhere.
So, the $11 million that Director Harris is referring to is, the district has identified in the current school year that we have a variety of savings from a variety of places. And we want to have some discussion about what, how should we invest those resources? The bulk of the resources are coming from savings due to vacant positions and how long they are potentially out there. What will end up happening with that funds is, if we do not spend it this year, which is one of the options, although we're almost done with the school year, it will end up in the fund balance. So, if it's directed to be spent in the 1617 budget, it's not there yet. We haven't finished the school year. That will be August 31st. It will increase the amount of one-time money we are spending to balance the 1617 budget. So, if it's spent on one-time things, then it is in 1617 and doesn't add to our planning requirements for 1718.
Director Harris.
Okay. We have a budget hearing coming up on the 23rd, and realistically, no changes are going to be made based on folks testifying at the budget hearing, and that this is a statutory requirement. Is that correct?
Not necessarily. There can be changes made at the public hearing. What we have proposed for you is, I'll go back to the actual proposal that is the statutory piece, which is the expenditure line. So, what we have done, what we have tried to do here is reflect in our budget documents that we have enough revenue to back up $789.7 million worth of expenditures. There are several commitments that have been made, staffing deadlines that we've already passed, but other things could shift around in the budget.
Is there anything in the statute that prevents us from having earlier budget hearings to where the public can feel as though their input is heard?
There is nothing that prevents us from having multiple community meetings at any time. There is a legal requirement to have a public hearing before we adopt the budget. So, whether that's, you know, we have public testimony right before you vote, or whether what we have done is, with previous boards, they've said, that doesn't work for me. I want at least a week between I hear from the community and when I vote on the budget. Dr. Nalan.
We're light-years ahead of timewise other districts. The statute says that we would release a copy of the budget on July 10th. We would schedule the two public hearings, and we would adopt a budget by the end of August. And in that timeframe, your point's well-taken. We're required to get all this input, but by then, we've gone through the edits with the ESD. We've done all of the preliminary information, and we could take it under consideration, but it would be something that would have to change after the budget was adopted. So, we're at least moving our processes up somewhat in order to provide greater opportunities for board input, and to some extent, the public, although your point's well-taken, that it's a cumbersome process and not something that's easily turned dramatically.
Stephen Nielsen, Deputy Superintendent. To that point and to the need, we have added work sessions in your board's schedule for budget work and budget work in October, January, February, and March, and then beyond that, probably some more, but those are in addition to what we've seen in the past, in the recent past.
One last question.
Dr. Harris?
Is there a way we can get rid of the levy financing off of the Board's budget? The Board's budget is inflated because of the levy costs, no? Can we do another line item and move it out? Because this Board is broke, but it doesn't appear that way.
So, there are requirements on state activities. So, how we report things that may be superintendent activity, school board activity, that is, and we can do this at another timeline, but it is required to be put there. We also have organizational structure, which is school board. So, we have school board state activity, and we have school board organizational activity. They are not necessarily have to be the same thing. We can move it into some other place, but it would still reflect on all reporting to the state as the activity of the school board.
Thank you.
Any more comments?
And I apologize, there was one other thing. It should have shown the edits on this, and I think we have the wrong version of the PowerPoint, but one other change occurred between Audit and Finance, and that related to the capital fund. The capital fund was showing an ending fund balance of zero and a beginning fund balance that was a reduced amount. And after looking at the budget book, the comment came up, what happened to community schools reserve? Are we planning on spinning that? So, that was not the intention of the presentation, so that amount was changed. And again, it does not affect the expenditures, but it reflected that we have a larger beginning fund balance, and we will have an ending fund balance. So, if there's questions as to why did you have an ending fund balance of zero in the capital fund, we do not, and we're not planning on that, and I apologize.
Dr. Pfeiffer?
I'm just wondering, it sounds like you're getting lots of community feedback on the budget so far? And I'm wondering if you can speak to who's looking at it with the level of detail that it sounds like they are, if you can share that?
Well, I mean, our best, biggest feedback has been on edits would be the city of Seattle. The capital fund was something I caught after taking the time to look at the capital fund in more detail. The levy was something that we were just, we finally got around to verifying with OSPI that our estimate was wrong. But the feedback we've been getting so far has been people very much thankful of the transparency in our new documentation, and we recognize there's going to be a lot of questions that sometimes come with transparency. But the city of Seattle was the most targeted feedback we've received recently.
The reason I ask that question is, my hope was that you were going to tell us that in addition to the city and other stakeholders who have a vested interest in knowing how we spend our dollars, that it would be a huge groundswell of parents who are also, you know, looking at, given the access issues that have been resolved, that there'd be a lot more parents that are paying attention to how individual dollars are being spent so that they can help us to make a more compelling case, particularly down in the legislature. I think the more, the more people we have that know this budget inside and out, I think they can make a much more compelling case when we have to make the arguments around McCleary and lack of funding.
And we're seeing it to start to build, but again, we've changed the budget book two years in a row to keep evolving it to get to the level it's at now. So, people don't know that it's as powerful of a tool as we believe we've built, so please help us get the message out there. I know we're trying to do it with our communications department, and once people realize that it has the level of detail it does, I think we'll get even more people interested in, anxious to see when we get it published over here.
Dr. Peters?
On the subject of the budget book, I just wanted to thank you for the work that went into it, the whole department. You've created something that is comprehensive and clear and even compelling in the way you've laid it out, and it seems like with each iteration, you add more information, and I think that's going to help the community understand exactly what we're, what our challenges are each year financially. And so, I encourage people to go take a look at this if they're interested in getting more involved in understanding the numbers. And there's also a whole section about schools and each, and how each school breaks down its budget, which is, which is very, very interesting, very informative. So, thank you for your work on the budget book.
Dr. Burke?
I'll second the gratitude for the, some good reading. Along the topic of how, how we reach our community and how we get the most bang from our thoughtful and deliberate families out there, what sort of an electronic record do we envision now or in the future being able to provide? Because it's one thing to be able to look through the book, it's another thing to be able to pull up a spreadsheet and run your own little analyses and not have to enter numbers, understanding that that's a heavier lift. Is there a vision for that?
My staff are chomping at the bit, but there's some, some challenges with going to full transparency and online, and we have some challenges coming to us from the legislature on possibly changing the structure of our accounting information going forward. But yes, we've seen other, not necessarily districts, but counties and other places in the United States who have online tools to allow people to drill down. And so, we're working on trying to get ourselves into a position so that when the district's ready to go there, the financial information will be at a high level of accuracy and be very easy to, meaningful. Because just because you can drill down on a number doesn't mean you understand what that number means. So, we're trying to improve the education of people as well. And the next thing would be to translate some of it.
Any more questions, comments? Thank you, Linda. Appreciate it. Our next introduction item is amending Board Policy Number 6805, comma keys. Can we hear from the NF?
Yes. This motion was brought to the Audit and Finance Committee meeting on June 9th, and we moved this item forward to the full Board with a recommendation for approval.
Thank you.
Second motion?
Clovercot Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources. So, I'm here tonight to introduce the proposed revisions to our current policy 6805, which governs accountability and oversight for keys. The key building policy was, excuse me, the key policy was developed to ensure controlled access to district buildings. The purpose, as currently stated, is to ensure maximum protection of district property and facilities to minimize possible theft, vandalism, and loss of materials and equipment. Missing from this policy, though, we felt, is to add that we will also be looking out and ensuring the safe, looking out for our students and our staff and ensuring that they are safe as well. So, we did have an incident occur earlier this year, which left one of our custodians feeling unsafe at work during the evenings. In response to this incident, along with others, we have made four substantive proposed changes to this policy. So, while the principal does remain the manager of the building and is responsible for the overall safety and security of the building, the four changes are as follows. We have added that the Director of Facility and Operations have oversight of the key control system. That's number one. Number two, we have added language that includes providing safety of staff and students, not just property. Number three, we have also added a protocol that would ask any staff coming in during off-hours to call the custodian on duty before coming in so that the custodian knows that somebody is coming into the building. We believe that's just some common courtesy. If there is no custodian on duty, say it's a weekend, you would still call and leave a message. It doesn't mean that the custodian has to answer. There's no permission given. It's just a common courtesy to call in advance. And then, fourth, we added greater accountability for the master log and the individual key record form. All keys must be signed in and out. Keys should be collected at the end of the school year, and the principal will go over this log with the custodian. Questions?
Dr. Pfeiffer?
We had significant conversation about this at the Audit and Finance Committee meeting last week, and in many ways, as you've described it, it helps to answer some of the questions that I had. One that I'm still a little bit concerned about is just the access question, and knowing a little bit about how schools operate and how access is granted or not granted, and people come in, it's kind of, it just happens as it happens. I'm wondering about the third change, which would be to require custodial notification in advance, and I'm wondering if that's going to end up being a barrier? Thinking about the people who would routinely have access to our buildings or need access to our buildings, I'm wondering if, what happens if the custodian is, they switch? Sometimes you have one custodian, but that custodian is not going to be the one that's in the building. Someone else comes in. What, how does the notification work with that?
I'm going to ask Bruce Gower to come up and help me answer this question.
All right.
So, we're really not trying to limit access. It's more of a notification, so the custodian is aware of who's in the building. So, you know, when they're done with their work and they clean an area, lock it down, if they know that the teacher's still there before they leave, they could go back and double-check. So, and with master keys, you don't necessarily need a master key to get into the building on the weekend. It's the most convenient way to do it, but not necessarily always the best. Most teachers have a submaster that would get them in at least one door in the building.
Can, can you help me understand where this policy will address or how it will address control of closets or rooms where we've got assessments or sensitive material like that, where we want to control access?
Well, we would, the key policy would dictate that those would be a little bit more secure areas that might require a master. Again, we're really trying to limit the number of master keys that are out there. So, trying to keep those particular rooms on something of a master key level, fairly secure.
I guess I'm wondering if there's, since it has been an issue of concern, if there's a way to incorporate explicit language in here in the, in the, the policy. I know it's a little late for that, but something that addresses the storage of sensitive academic material or controlled access material.
Yeah, we could add that.
I can add, I can add something in.
And also, to speak to your point about substitute custodians and different custodians, the cell phone number for the building remains the same, so that'll go to whoever's working in that particular building.
Oh, so I didn't understand that part. So, if someone's accessing the building, they're calling the, the number of the school?
Yeah, there's a, there's a facility's custodial phone number for that particular school that's published, and the custodian on duty carries that phone at all times.
Okay. That's great.
Dr. Peters?
Does this policy offer a limit to the number of copies of a master key that can be made?
No. No, it just requires approval.
Okay.
So, if there's a, you know, there's a process that we currently have where it has to be approved by me, and I look for a justification for that key. And if there's a, if there's a legitimate reason, then we can issue a master key. But again, we try to make sure it's well justified.
Okay. I wonder if there's any way to put some parameters around that, because I think that was one of the issues with Beacon Hill, was that an awful lot of people had keys. I think I heard there was as many as nine keys, and so, I'm wondering how we could do that. Could we put some sort of parameters so that we don't have so many keys, we lose track of them?
Well, and I think one of the parameters that we tried to add to this was to make sure that all keys are returned at the end of the school year, and even if they're allowed to have them over the summer, that they're checked in and reissued for that period, where we hadn't been doing that consistently. So, once you get a master key, you have a master key until you basically leave the district. So, now we've added to the policy that it's required at the end of the school year, the keys are checked out, checked in.
Okay. And then, to Director Burke's question, I believe another, we recently revised another policy to, to address the whole issue of assessment security. So, I think another policy has established that assessments should be contained and locked file cabinets. There's something else, we did address that somewhere else, but not so much in this policy. But if we want to do an overlap and have extra precautions in this one as well, I think that could be, that could be prudent. And then, my next question, and my only last question, is does this policy address at all the usage of keys by any private providers of childcare or preschool or any of the city preschool providers? Does it apply to them?
It does. Yeah, well, it's, basically, the policy states that they can't be issued a district key if they're not a district person, a master key.
Won't that be a change, though? Because currently, don't they have their own keys? Aren't there custodians for these providers who have their own keys?
They have their own access to their own area, but that doesn't always grant them access into the school building.
But what if the room is inside the school building?
Then they don't need a master key. They can be issued a key for that door, for that part of the school, but we wouldn't necessarily grant them a, we would probably never grant them a master key.
Okay. But they would still have access to the building?
They would.
And this policy does not govern that?
Correct.
Okay.
Any more questions, comments? Thank you. Our next item is placing conditional certification application on Board Personnel Report. Can we hear from the NF?
This motion was discussed at the June 9th, 2016 Audit and Finance Committee meeting. We moved, the committee moved this item forward to the full Board with a recommendation for approval.
Okay, so, I want to give a little bit of context with this one for, for you and for the public. So, during the 2016 legislative session, OSPI did send a notice to districts aimed at informing everyone of the statewide teacher shortage we are facing and, and put some possible solutions out there. In that notice, State Superintendent Rennie Dorn stated that school districts in Washington are having major difficulties hiring mathematics, science, special education, and other teachers, especially in rural and high-poverty areas. All school districts report also that we have a significant shortage in substitute teachers. Additionally, with the implementation of the full gay kindergarten K-3 class size reduction, we are expecting to hire approximately 10,000 new kindergarten through third grade teachers over the next three to four years across the state, and yet, the in-state production of new teachers is only 1,500 that have that early childhood K-3 certification. So, several strategies are recommended in that notice, and that, we did attach that to the Board Action Report. We've been working closely with our substitute leaders of the substitute union, with Peter Henry, which you heard from earlier, around shortage of substitute teachers. This bar is not speaking about substitute teachers. It's actually talking about classroom teachers, so I just wanted to clarify. So, a few years ago, this topic was highly contentious because we had a contract with the Teach for America, or TFA, and we're using TFA conditionally certified teachers as one strategy. For clarification, we do not have a contract with TFA, and we do not plan on utilizing that organization as a strategy to fill hard to staff or any of our other positions. However, we do have a need to utilize the conditional certification for some of our hardest-to-fill positions. Before these occur, our current practice is that if a teacher or a conditionally certified teacher-to-be wanted to become a conditionally certified teacher, they have to apply to OSPI. Before they can apply to OSPI, they have to have Board approval from our school district, from UOL. Our current practice is to bring these individual submissions to the Board in its own individual Board Action Report. So, our request is that rather than having individual Board Action Reports for each individual submission, that the Department of Human Resources is requesting permission from the Board to establish a process by where application authorizations are submitted to the Board for approval through the Human Resources Personnel Report, and we have attached a sample Personnel Report for you to look at. If the conditional certificate is approved, these employees will If the conditional certificate is approved, these employees will be listed on a future personnel report as certificated hired staff. OSPI does allow for this type of flexibility in hiring because it understands that there are real shortages that exist for certain teachers and certain schools. We may want to secure the services of unusually talented individuals who do not currently possess a teaching certificate. In order for a conditionally certi, in order, excuse me, for a conditional certificate to be issued, the applicant must be considered highly qualified and experienced and have, must be taught and have some unusual distinction or exceptional talent through public records of accomplishment and/or award. So an example of that would perhaps be a native Japanese speaker. We're having a hard time finding a teacher in one of our international or bilingual programs. There is no teacher that has a certificate there to fill that position. Nobody's applied, there is nobody. So we would then try to recruit an individual who has an unusual talent, go through this process so that they could be teaching in our classroom. In order, once we do receive these teachers and they're in our school district, we must assign them a mentor, a plan of assistant, and they must have 60 clock hours within the first six working days of employment. These are also short-term, two-year certifications. I'll open up for questions.
Dr. Peters.
Just have a comment. I just want to draw people's attention to the sample personnel report that does highlight that these would be conditional certificates pending, and so it's very clearly designated, you know, delineated in the personnel report. So if there were any questions or people wanted to know exactly how many or who we're talking about, it will be clearly, you know, depicted in this document.
That's correct.
Dr. Burke.
You had indicated that you develop, or HR would develop a process by which candidates were evaluated for consideration for conditional certificates? Is that?
Not quite.
Not quite.
So in order to receive a conditional certification, you have to apply to OSPI. Before you can apply, our school board has to approve those applications. So right now, we bring those to you individually in an individual board action report, which as you know goes through committee intro action, can take sometimes six to eight weeks. What we're proposing, the new process, would be that those come to you not in individual bars, but on the personnel report that Director Peters just pointed out to us. And you would be approving that those individuals could then apply to OSPI. Once they receive their conditional certification and we hire them, they would be on a future personnel report as a hired certificated staff member.
Okay, I guess what I'm trying to understand is, is there a criteria by which they go from a candidate to being a conditional applicant for us? Is there a screening process that you would apply, or would they just go on the list? What determines the need? What determines the qualification?
What determines, what determines how unique they are and uniquely qualified is what you're asking for? So, okay, so what I think, so we would need to determine a screening process to make sure that we have some level of quality control for who does come into our district and who would be applying for conditional certification. We don't have that process in place. Actually, I shouldn't speak. I don't know if we have that process in place right now. If we don't have one, we will make sure to have one. If we do have one, I'll make sure that we share that.
Okay, thank you. I guess the, excuse me, the fundamental point that I would try to make is that if somebody previously came under a conditional certificate, there would be an opportunity to dialogue around what are the qualifications, what's the screening that's been done? And we just want to make sure that there's due diligence, that that follows a process, for example, that that uses the equity decision-making tool, so on and so forth.
I hear you, thank you. I will make sure to address that before action.
Director Blenford.
I appreciate the, how this can help to solve several of the problems that we've encountered recently around shortages of teachers. But I have a little bit of heartburn, and I'll share with you, which I'm sure you probably know, knowing that your doctorate's around education. Education theory would suggest that, that teachers coming into our classrooms need to be skilled both knowledgeable, both in subject matter knowledge, which I think this addresses really well, but also in pedagogy. And I don't hear as much about how we're going to, if a highly qualified person comes in that doesn't have a strong pedagogical background, how we would shore that up in short order. I heard you say something about clock hours within the first?
So, so there are three things that I think are trying to address that.
Okay.
So one is that we would assign them a mentor, like a master teacher. We would put a plan of assistance in place, and we would ensure that they have 60 clock hours within their first 60 days of employment. So that doesn't, it takes years to become a fully skilled teacher, absolutely, to learn the pedagogical skill, to become a teacher. You're not going to learn in 60 clock hours, and I would argue you don't learn in your program at the university level either. You learn how to teach when you become a teacher. So I don't know how else to address that. I understand the heartburn. We want really effective, highly skilled teachers in every single classroom. We do have a reality where we have trouble finding anybody to be in certain classrooms. We can't fill them with subs, we can't fill them with teachers. So we're trying to employ every strategy we can to ensure that every single day, students have a teacher in front of them. That means they could be a substitute teacher, a certified teacher, a conditionally certified teacher, or even a substitute on an emergency certificate. We're trying to do everything we can.
So, and I appreciate that response, and I agree with it wholeheartedly. Part of my concern is around that 60 clock hours within the, did you say the first, how many?
Sixty working days.
And, and so someone's going to walk in and become a new teacher and be required to get 60 clock hours in 60 days? That seems, does that seem, rather than that seems, does that seem to be a bit burdensome to that potential new teacher?
Perhaps. I don't want to misspeak because I haven't thought that through all the way, and I want to be able to give you a thoughtful response to that. I think it's in our best interest to make sure that the teachers that we are bringing in that do get the approval of the conditional cert, that we provide the support for them to be able to become a really skilled teacher for the students. I'd have to explore more about the 60 clock hours within 60 days. How does that happen? How is it, you know, other districts are employing this strategy, so I'm sure that there are strategies that they're using to support the teachers in getting those 60 clock hours. I have to explore more. I'm sorry, Director Blenford.
That's okay. The last thing that I'll say on this is, I would hope that you will, at some point in the future, be able to provide us with a map that shows us where these teachers are being placed.
We can.
And the reason that I ask that is, there was a study that I read just this week that said that if we were to place our, if we were to place all of our low-income and students of color with our top 25% of teachers, we would eliminate our gaps. And the two things in my mind come together because I, as much as I believe these teachers are highly skilled, we want them, we don't necessarily want to put them with our most challenging students to start off with. So it would be good to be able to see where they're being deployed inside of the district.
Over time.
Over time, so that we can ensure that, one, they're improving their quality, but two, they're not training on our most needed students, because in many cases, that's a recipe for gaps increasing, not decreasing.
Right, and I think it's important to know that this is not our strategy. This is one of many. We are trying to recruit, as you heard, nurses 100% filled at this point in the year. Last year, we did not have that. We're doing everything we can to find really highly qualified, effective teachers and other staff to be in our building. So this is just one, one strategy of a multi-pronged strategy and approach.
Dr. Gary.
So as I understand it, the process before was that each of these would have been brought to us as individuals? And I would assume in that process, then, there would be some detail about them that we're not going to be seeing in. It seems like we would go from a fully fleshed-out proposal down to lines in a report that's filled with line after line after line of data, that it seems to me like there's something in between there that we should have. We should have a working understanding of who these people are. That's the way it was before for some reason, and we're throwing that all out for expediency? And I'm just, I'm not sure I'm entirely comfortable with going from those two ends, though I understand the timing of it, and I understand the burdensomeness of the bar procedure. It's just the disappearance of the information that likely went into the bar that we will no longer have ready access to as part of just something that we would read through, and it would just, we would all have a chance to have eyes on. It would take one of us to stop and ask a question when so often, that's going on the consent agenda anyway.
Let me think about how we might be able to employ something that would be, we still go through the personnel report, but maybe there's some sheet or information. I need to think through it. Again, I want to be more thoughtful in my responses than just standing up here and giving you an answer.
I appreciate that a lot. It just seems to go from, you know, from so much to so little that I feel like there's a responsibility that we're falling down on in allowing this to just happen. Thank you.
Dr. Peters.
And I think something that would help address this is something that Director Burke had asked about, and that is what measures are you using? What rubric are you using to decide who qualifies for a conditional certification? And so, once you determine whether or not that tool exists, or whether you create one, I think that will, that will help us know.
That they've been through a screening process.
Right.
They've been vetted, that there's been a rubric applied.
Right. And then as far as us knowing more detail, I mean, I wonder if there is a place for us to just have some kind of, I was going to say review, but not quite, but just a little bit more information, so it's not just a name. If we feel that this is something that requires a little bit more care, because we're doing something beyond what we normally do, you know, we're trying something a little bit different, and we want to make sure that we have fully qualified people and that they're put, they're placed throughout the district equitably, you know, and, because I know one of the concerns in the past, and that was with Teacher America, was the concern that those particular teachers only had five weeks' training and that they were being put in certain schools. I think they were, the model, the national model for Teach for America was to put the school, these teachers in the schools of low-income schools or schools where kids of color were struggling, and, or they were put in front of special ed classes. And, you know, families justifiably said that's not fair to put the least trained, least qualified teachers in front of our kids. And so I think that's why we ended up with so much more scrutiny when we had Teach for America here. So I agree with what Director Gary says. We have to have something, something in between, a little bit more information than just a list.
Any more questions, comments? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item. 2016, 2017, City of Seattle Families and Education Levy, Community-Based Organization Contract Approval. CNI.
This motion was discussed at the May 12th CNI meeting and was moved forward to the full board with a recommendation for approval.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board. Michael Stone, Director of Grants and Fiscal Compliance. I'm bringing forward to you five contracts of our top CBOs that will be doing the work with the Family and Education Levy out at the 41 schools. That would be the City of Seattle Parks and Rec, University Tutors for Seattle Schools, Community in Schools, and the YMCA Greater Seattle, as well as City Year. I'm bringing this forward now so that we know that we have the contracts in place for the start of school, and services can begin on the first day of school.
Any questions, comments? Okay, thank you. Our next item, Motion to Accept the Head Start Grant Serving 400 Preschool Children and Families in Amount of $4,419,939.
This motion was brought to the June 9th Audit and Finance Committee meeting, where the committee moved the item forward to the full board with a recommendation for approval.
Good evening, Jean Guzzi, Program Manager, Head Start. This is the introduction of the annual Head Start Grant. With Head Start Policy Council approval, which happened last week, and board approval, we will be able to apply for $4.2 million of federal funds to provide Head Start services in the district next year.
Any questions, comments? Dr. Peters.
Just, you know, by way of context, so this is the annual, annual?
Yes, annual grant.
And so what's different this year is that, and we discussed this in a different point.
We did.
Was that this year, we will be serving 30 fewer children with basically the same amount of funds.
That's correct, the same amount of funds.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah.
Dr. Gary.
And I just want to add that Mr. Guzzi and I have sat down several times to go over the changes and talk about the paperwork and bring in the Head Start committee members, and it's been a pleasure to work with him. He's been very thorough and careful in explaining each step of the way to me, the new Head Start representative. Thank you.
Any more questions, comments? Okay, moving right along, thank you. Substance Abuse Prevention Services Grant from King County Mental Health. A&amp;F.
Say A&amp;F on there.
Yours says A&amp;F.
Mine says this one to CNI. CNI Chair, do you recall this one?
It was A&amp;F last week.
It was A&amp;F, okay. Yeah, interesting. Well, that's not what my notes say, so I'm going to have to go to a different document here. Okay, Leslie, you want to go ahead and read that out? Oh, actually, you just told me, okay. It came to Audit and Finance on June 9th, and we brought it forward for approval, recommendation for approval.
Good evening again, Directors. Michael Stone, Director of Grants, Fiscal Compliance. We're bringing forward you, forward to you an increase, this is actually, we've had the funding in the district. The county is giving us another $110,000 to expand the service, which now takes us over the $250,000 threshold. So we will be at $256,000 for services at four schools in the district to provide drug prevention services.
Any questions? Dr. Blenford.
I'll just note that in Audit and Finance, we had a little bit of conversation about hoping that we could get a report, get some information on the need for drug and alcohol counseling in our schools, particularly with the legalization of marijuana. Principals I've talked to say that it has become a pretty acute or chronic, I, sometimes I don't know what the difference between the two is, maybe it's both, but it is a pretty significant issue in many of our schools. And so I don't think that today is probably the appropriate time, but at some point, my hope is that either through the executive committee or however we get scheduled, there would be the opportunity for a presentation on that issue.
And we can, with Mrs. Davis, and bring that up to the board at that time.
Can I ask, what made you decide on the four schools? How was the four schools chosen?
The four schools are chosen by the Department of Behavioral Health and Recovery by the State of Washington. It's a federal funds that are given to the state, state to the county, county to us. And so the state selects them based on marijuana use rates, as well as graduation rates, free introduced lunch rates, et cetera.
Thank you. Any more questions? Thank you. Our next one is RFQ 01542, birth to three intervention. Our next one is RFQ 01542, Birth to Three Intervention Administration Services, Experimental Education Unit, EEU, Wonderland Development Center, Northwest Center, Boyer Children's Clinic, A&amp;F and CNI.
Okay, so this one came to Audit Finance first, where it was approved to be included for introduction today, but then it was taken to Curriculum and Instruction Policy, where it was actually discussed, I think, in greater detail.
Thank you. Before Jesse Wyatt actually start, I'd like to say that we are now at introduction item number eight, Birth to Three Administration Services. I would note that items eight through 15 are all being introduced by Wyatt Jesse. He will introduce all eight items together, and then we will move to Director Questions. First, may I have the committee chair's recommendation?
It's convenient that all of these items were discussed in CNI on Monday, June 13th, and all of them were moved forward to the board with a recommendation for approval.
Thank you. Go ahead, Ted.
Good morning, Board President Batu. I just think I said good morning because I'm feeling like it. And I've had a lot, a number of people wave, wave at me and go, "You didn't cut it short, right?" Wyatt, yes, I am. Yes, we did go to A&amp;F last week, as well as CNI this week, just in regard to Board Policy Number 6220, around the procurement contracts, including agreements for any of those agreements or contracts at the $250,000 or greater threshold. And these particular eight contracts that we're moving forward do fall into four particular areas, really around our private placements. Those are therapeutic services. We also have proportional share, where we have service plans for students who attend private school. We have some agency or organization flow, flu dollars, contract with Edmund School District for DHH services, as well as Children Hospital, due to their unique placement here in the boundaries of Seattle. And then also, our Birth to Three Intervention, and that's why we have those four particular organizations, which we have consistently contracted with for the last couple of years. These overall contracts are generally with the same providers. We do have a number of changes that happen within proportional share. So, that's why I'm, I'm here this evening to move forward these services that we need for our students within Seattle Public Schools who have special needs.
Anybody has any questions? And all from eight to 15. Now, Director Geary?
It was raised by a member of the audience that we should take a look at the Edmunds contract. And so, if you could give us a pre, a brief explanation as to why we would be contracting with Edmunds for deaf, of hard and hearing services? And I am assuming we are doing that, because by law, we have to contract out when we cannot provide services within the district. So, I will assume lawfully, we have made that determination, that we can't do it. So, a brief explanation as to why could be helpful.
Yes, Director Geary, that, that would be about the IEP team, and they're really thinking about placement, what's the best placement? Again, it's an individual education plan. It's not just, we're going to label the broader brush for students just because they have DHH services, or even DHH is their primary placement. Those placement needs may be greater than what we can provide in some instances. So, and in other cases, students also benefit when they have been somewhere for a sustained period of time, and not always necessarily transitioning them on a frequent basis. That is the particular case, so we do work within our IEP team structure, with also District Administrator there to think about, when is it appropriate? Where is it appropriate to bring a student back from the six that are currently projected to be contracted with Edmund School District back to Seattle Public Schools?
Any more questions? Thank you, Wyatt, for doing all 15 of them.
Thank you.
Okay, Approval of Washington Schools Risk Management Pool Coverage Agreement for Fiscal Year 2016, 2017. A&amp;F?
Yes, this came to the Audit and Finance Committee on June 9th, where we moved this item forward to the full board for recommendation for approval.
Thank you.
Good evening, Directors. Richard Stout, Risk Manager. We have been members of the Washington School Risk Management Pool since 2002, and annually, we pay a premium contribution to the, the pool. Under the leadership of Ken Gotch, it was identified that we had not been properly getting approval for that expenditure. It's, it really is a routine item. We must have coverage for our liability and our property, and there are very few opportunities for school districts in Washington to obtain that coverage. The Washington Schools Risk Management Pool has been a great partner for us for many years, and we're asking for your approval to spend the money to make sure that we remain covered.
Thank you. Any more, any questions, comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next one is Awarding Refuge Disposal and Mixed Waste Recycling Collection Services, bit number PB03660. Ops?
This was heard on March, or May the 19th, and moved forward for consideration.
Thank you.
So, we're here tonight, Bruce Scowra, Director of Facilities. We're here tonight to request approval of a new three-year contract with Recology Cleanscapes for Refuge Disposal and Mixed Waste Recycling Collection. The value of the contract is $1,660,458.30, or $550,486.10 per year, for three years. Recology Cleanscapes is our current vendor, and they were the low bidder when we bid it out. So, the new contract does offer us a savings.
Any question? Director Harris?
Does Recology have a collective bargaining agreement with its employees? And B, what are the employee benefits? Because these pass-through contracts, I appreciate that we have to take the lowest bidder, but equity and taking care of the people that take care of us?
Sure.
Point of information.
Yeah, so, I'm not sure about all of their staff, but their drivers are Teamsters.
Any more questions? Thank you. Our next one, PTA4 Award Contract, P1461, for Architecture Engineering, AE Services to TCF Architecture for the Daniel Webster Modernization Project. Ops? Ops?
Sorry. I was thinking about my joke just a second ago. This was heard by the Ops Committee on the 19th and recommended for consideration.
Thank you.
Yes. Good evening. Richard Best, Director of Capital Projects and Planning for Seattle Public Schools. This is a contract that we're bringing forth to renovate, to prepare the design documents to renovate Webster Elementarys, or Webster School. It's a contract with TCF Architecture. We went through a selection process that is described in Board Procedure 6220, and eight firms submitted requests for qualifications, submitted their requests for qualifications for consideration for this design work. We interviewed three. TCF was selected. We are in the process of negotiating the price. We're anticipating a range between $2.6 million and $3.1 million for their services. Total project budget for this project is $31,737,94. And this project would be complete in the summer of 2020. Design services would not begin till the fall of 2016, so roughly two years for design, two years for construction. I will note that we can begin design services. We cannot begin construction without a programmatic EIS approved, so. And we are, this is a BTA4-funded project, and we are asking just for your approval on the design services.
Any questions? Dr. Harris?
Mr. Best, what do we say to the folks in the Loyal Heights community and other folks that come to us, and they say, "Y'all haven't even figured out what you want to do with Webster yet."
Well, current plans are to utilize it as an elementary school, and that's the direction that we are proceeding at this moment in time. I do recognize there are some other discussions occurring as to potential other uses for Webster, so.
Can you elaborate on discussions, potential other uses? You've got my curiosity now, thank you.
Well, we're, potential other educational uses for Webster Elementary School, potentially as a middle school alternative school. So, there are other, that the Office of Teaching and Learning is considering for this building, other uses.
Dr. Peters?
So, this and the following two items were both recommended for consideration. Can you address why it was for consideration? Was there some information missing?
We're still negotiating the contract language with them, and we're still negotiating the amount with them, Director Peters. And so, that's why it's coming forward for consideration in lieu of their, Operation Committee approval.
And just as a point of clarity, so this building currently houses the Nordic Heritage Museum.
Correct, and it's housed the Nordic Heritage Museum for almost 30 years.
Okay, and the Nordic Heritage Museum has, has procured its own new building, so we are not evicting the museum. They are moving out of their own volition, is that correct?
That is correct. They are moving out.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions, comments? Thank you. Our next one is PTA4 Award Contract, K1255, for Architectural and Engineering Services to Stamper Architects for Roof Replacement at Ballard Garfield and West Seattle High School Project. Ops?
Ops Committee heard this on May the 19th, moved it forward for consideration.
So, this is to replace the roof in its entirety at Ballard High School. It's to replace a portion of the roof at Garfield High School. It is the portion that was not replaced during the BEX II renovation of that high school. And then it is to make repairs to the historic clay tile roof at West Seattle High School. We had seven firms submit their statements of qualifications to implement this work in accordance with Board Procedure 6220. We interviewed two of those firms, and SM Stamper Architects was selected as the most qualified firm. We're bringing this to you. The contract amount has been negotiated. It wasn't negotiated at the time it went to Operations Committee. We do have a, a amount negotiated at this time, and so, bringing it to you for your approval at the next school board meeting, as we want to begin the work, the design work this summer, when the building is not occupied, or when these buildings, I should say, are not occupied.
Any questions? Comment? Oh, Dr. Burke?
This, this question applies to this item and, by association, the previous one as well. Is there a reason why we don't list, you mentioned the number of applicants? Why we do, on the Board Action Report, why we do not list the names of those individual applicants?
The names of all the firms that submitted their. Again, this has just been past practice. Director Burke, we can do that if, if you'd like us to do that, so.
I think that would be a good informative point, thank you.
Any more questions? Comments? Before we end, I actually like to do a shout-out. I have four grandchildren who are graduating this year. I want to make sure I do a shout-out. Jaiman Patu, who's actually graduating from Shawwater from eighth grade. Mirko Patu Jackson, graduating from eighth grade. Charisma Patu, who's graduating from Maria Beach. Sanaya Simpson Patu, graduating from Maria Beach. And then my daughter Annie, who's graduating from City University with her master's degree to be a principal. Congratulations to all five of you, thank you. And meeting is now adjourned.